I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have minutes for January 3rd and January 18th.
Okay, Bruce and I...
I was not here for you today.
Yeah, you was here...
Oh, the 3rd, yes.
You was, she was here for the 3rd.
Yeah.
Correct? No, it was absent on the 3rd.
He was zoomed.
Eighteen, okay.
He was a zoom on the 18th.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for three minutes for January 3rd. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay.
Now, the next one's you two. I'm right here on the 18th.
I'll make a motion to re-approve the guidance of January 18th, 2022.
And I'll second that, all in favor say aye. Okay. Only a payroll amount of $187,059.9. I'm guessing it's all in order from the auditors, so their motion is approved?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve the payroll in another $187,059.9.
I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye, I'm sure.
It's okay. Then we have to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable report in amount of $263,449.86.
I make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of payroll claims in amount of $263,449.86.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Then we have claims, pretty big ones, claims amount of $446,410. And of course, those are bills going out for the ambulance service and all that, money's coming in, money's going out, that's why it's so big. Julie continues to amaze me, they were down, they'll be down for 48 hours with just one ambulance, the one that we had borrowed, was that Morgan County?
Yes.
Had to go back, and as we thought we'd be down, but we got the word that Med3 could go back into operation, so they did, so we were, we were back in pretty good shape. They've just done amazing job, not just the leadership, but everybody's done a great job.
I make a motion, we approve claims in amount of $446,410.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Chris, you're up.
So the, I'm here to ask for approval to get the, to go after the multi-hazard mitigation planning grant. This is a state grant that they do, well, it's actually a federal grant passed through the state, that they do every, about eight years where the, you know, county will get money to reimburse the cost of making a plan. We did this in 2008 and 2016, Amy did it, and a lady before Amy did it, so this is just standard on the cycle.
Okay.
The, the state's gonna reimburse us $18,457 to, basically to contract out right in the plan. Where county has to do a soft match of a little over $6,000, which in this program is, that's covered pretty much by labor of community involved, yes. The general plan, and we're not 100%, if we can do it, although Amy did it last time, is to work through partnership, Park County, so they would get the $18,000.
Yep.
And then we would work to write that. The, the state has a 36-month period of performance for this, but they haven't developed what they want the counties to do and when it would be done. So there's a lot of time. And if you remember, a little over a year ago, you actually signed a letter of intent to, to work with this grant.
Yep. Okay. So you're just seeking, just so everybody understands, we don't expect the sheriff or emergency, everybody to come to us to ask our permission to seek a grant. It's kind of a no-brainer for grants available, but state requires that we do acknowledge all those grants to make sure that we don't have two grants competing for the same money by the same county, so that's why they come to us to seek permission for the grants. So I make a motion that we approve emergency management to seek, seek this planning grant.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Okay. Yeah, I need some...
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. I always explain that because it always feels like you're doing micromanaging, we're telling people how to run their offices, and that's not the case at all. It's just that we are required to approve all, all grants that are being sought. Is that it?
That would be it.
Okay, we have the letter from the taxpayer. There, it's under that award, under the human award letter. Okay, I can see this also from him previously, so we just acknowledge receipt of the letter from Mr. Ruckin. Okay, next up, we, as you know, we pointed Stephanie Lawes to the health board, it's been a real struggle for the county, especially through the COVID process, to keep a county nurse, funding was always an issue, the council was involved, concerned with the number of hours that were going to be worked and the, to pay for those number of hours. So it was always a struggle whether we would have a county nurse, and then our county nurse went in, as an independent contractor, working during the vaccinations as well and the testings. Stephanie Lawes came up with, to me, a great plan, how to take care of that problem, and what it comes down to is Union Hospital will simply lease a nurse to us, that nurse will be a full-time employee of Union Hospital, they will take care of all the benefits, they'll take care of all the insurance, and all we have to do is pay a fee, and that fee is completely covered by a grant that the health department has to, to okay that. So there is no cost to the county to provide this nurse with these stipulated hours as they are in the contract, and I think it's a, it's just, to me, it's just an easy, easy solution to a difficult problem. And Nick has looked at this, and Nick is okay with this, with this contract. And they will work out the hours with the health department, and the question was whether this needs to be signed by the health department or signed by us, and Nick and I both felt it's probably, all contracts have to come through here, that we go ahead and approve the leasing agreement with the, with Union Hospital, and then the health, health department can control the hours and how the act of service, the facilitation of contract will be carried out. So I make a motion that we approve this employee leasing agreement with the Union Hospital to provide a Park County health nurse.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. It's the 53rd?
Fourth.
Fourth. Do you have a number?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we have a quote here from Gibson, what does this pertaining to?
Laura, does this Gibson tell data, is that, is there an office involved with this, or?
Um, they're just wanting the charges to go, um, this is what I forward to, forward to you all earlier today that I received from Randy. Randy just wants to know if the commissioners are good to go with this.
Okay, so the IT, IT director needs, needs us to do, design this for him to be able to do what he does?
I think it's for software.
Software, okay.
It's a phone software. One's for the courthouse and one's for the ambulance.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not a service thing, it's just for version software then, okay.
It's to accept that they're going to accept these billing charges for the software.
Okay. Looks like one is $165, and one is worth $81.60.
It's like billing, business voicemail possibly, or one of them?
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, a thousand dollar or two.
Oops, I missed, oh, I didn't see that, yeah, I didn't see that, yeah. Well, I wish he was here to explain it to us by very confidence that if he's requesting it, something that we need to get done.
Phone voicemail system and applications.
Okay.
Says you'll receive an invoice once you approve the quote.
Okay, we had a meeting with him here the other day, and he was going to get what he needed to do, what needed to be done, so I guess this is a result of that. Cindy's not there, she was at that meeting as well, so. Are you guys okay with approving it without us really knowing what it is that he's purchasing?
Did you send us the email?
I wrote it to you just before, I just received it today.
Was it from Randy or from Gibson?
Yeah, you called Randy.
And maybe he's just got it explained here on that email then.
You could give, like, Jim or somebody conditional approval to approve it if it is just the voicemail and the software, I suppose.
What does he have?
Randy says, here are the quotes for the phone system software assurance.
Do you see?
That's really all it says.
If I can find him here. Randy, clear, let me see if I can call him real quick. Put me on the spot. Hey Randy, it's Jim Meas, hey, I've got you on speakerphone here in commissioner meeting, so be careful what you say, don't be calling people names and stuff, we're listening to you. We, we got your request here, we don't really know what they're for, we just wanted to confirm that these were things that you just needed us to, to okay, some of you need to, to do what you do?
Is that the Gibson?
Yes, yes.
Yes, those are the software assurance sites that, like, tell the software, they, Gibson will update it, you know, for us at the switches, it's got the MPV, so we just need to, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you, you were, you were good to go with that.
Yep.
All right, thanks, sir, see ya.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we just need a motion to do approve then.
I'll make a motion to approve the Gibson tell data quote that we received for Randy, whatever he used to do with software. And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay.
I need a signature, please.
Just one?
Yeah, just one, just Jim's.
There you go.
Okay, I've got a few things for new business that we gotta get to here. First off, part with the BCI and Cover Bridge Festival, for the past 60 years, we've rented tenning from Lafayette Tent and Oving, that's the post and canvas tents for the square and for Monizuma and Rosedale, I think, I'm not sure what the other one is. And that cost of $18,000 or some years, so I don't know how we got that, how that got locked in for these breaks for so long. Lafayette Tent only just noticed, notified us and BCI that they are no longer doing that business, they are no longer doing posts and, and canvas tents, so they are out of that business, so they have sought places to try to find someone to replace and put the tents on the square as they had before. They have one, I don't have the name for it, but they have one, and, but the cost is going to be $39,000 now, $20,000 more than it's been before. And checking with other companies, that's not out of line, the real break was at Ben Lafayette Tent Oving, that's why they're going out of business, they were just working their way out of what they had. So the other discussion was, do we want to buy our own, but I have no interest in that, doesn't mean we can't, but you're gonna have to have somebody to put them up, take them down, store them, clean them, repair them, all that kind of stuff, so I don't know that we have much choice, we're gonna have the Cover Bridge Festival. So what I, reason I bring this up now, for the past several years, we have given BCI $25,000 out of the transient merchant licenses to pay for expenses for the Cover Bridge Festival. That has never, and I really reiterated that with Nisa, they have new, a new group of people there in the office, and she's doing a great job, Nisa and Valerie, doing, doing a great job, but this is new to them as well. But they were under the misconception that that was a guaranteed $25,000 a year, and it is not a guaranteed $25,000. We have chosen to give up to $25,000 for the last several years, but there is no guarantee on that. So I told her, I can't, I can't guarantee that that $25,000 would be there at, at the end of the year to pay the bills unless I talk to you guys first. So what I'm asking is for, for one year, just right now, to, for just this first year, so they can go ahead and make their contracts with the new people, I'm just, I think we should commit now $20,000 to BCI to cover expenses, that would cover the cost of the tents for the, for the first year. We paid for the tents anyway, but they won't have the extra now to, to do the other things with, they think they'll have funds to cover the other stuff, but. So just to make sure that they have money available to cover the cost of the tents, to be in contract with these people, I guess my request is that we go ahead and instead of waiting till we get the bills, at the end of the, end of the year, after the festival for up to $25,000, we go ahead and commit $20,000 to the cost of the tent.
So Jim, do you realize that that money's already in the budget?
Yes.
So it's approved in the budget, so you're wanting to cut the budget, so if you're saying?
No, I want to commit, that $25,000, what, just paid by that $25,000 is determined by us, we always determine what that is, is for, how that money is spent. We are not committed to spending it at all, but it's in the budget, should we choose to do that. I can't imagine why we wouldn't do that, but we always have that voluntary to do that. What I'm asking of the commissioners is to go ahead and let us tell BCI that we will guarantee that we'll pay at least $20,000 of that $25,000 to BCI, if that's enough to cover this $20,000 additional cost for, for the head kids.
Just wanting to stay in page with you.
Yeah.
If, if we commit to it now, then they can go ahead and sign the contract.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That would just leave us $5,000 to pay for the other things.
Get from.
Because that $25,000 is broken up into different slots.
Sure, always has been, always has been, that's what we always decided.
For the tents.
Yep.
It's all broken up into different slots for...
But there's never been a guarantee in those slots, I don't know how you written it up in the, in the lines, but we have never guaranteed what's going to what. We have helped pay for trash, tents, most of TML money, of course, goes to police and, and ambulance services, but the other $25,000 that we choose goes to those ancillary things, and the way that came to be was they were hurting for money, BCI was some years ago. Because really, the only people that support the festival, the only people that support the festival are those vendors on the square. No one else anymore pays any fee, BCI, to, to have the Bridge Fest. It used to be everybody had to be a member, and it used to be that they got a percentage of the transient merchant license fees when they did that, until they got up to where they wanted 30% of those fees, and, and then the commissioners decided, and I think, I think Haysville was ordered that, when that happened, I think, then they took it back to the auditor's office, to do it to the auditor's office, that's how it came back to the auditor's office. So how that split up has never been a guarantee of how we would do, that that's just how it's worked, that we always agreed to do it that way. So this would be a different, different way of spending the $25,000, so.
Do we, do we have it split up or do that be?
We don't, we split it, they submit bills, and Nisa's first year, she submitted an invoice, and I said, no, you don't submit an invoice, she submitted a request, and then we'll decide how to split it up, however you want it to be, and it's always been however they want it to be, we've never contested that. I just wanted to make sure she understood that that was not a guaranteed $25,000 to spend on what you choose to spend it on. That's always been a gift from the county to help, help them do what they do, only because they've lost all that revenue over these years, the memberships as well as the percentage off of the transient merchant license. So my request, if you guys are okay with that, of that $25,000, that doesn't mean we have to spend the other five, I'm sure we will, but I would like to have them, I committed to them that we would at least pay the $20,000, which would give them enough to cover the cost of the new tent and see how it goes going forward.
And I'll second that.
Any questions, Bruce? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we are committed to BCI now to use $20,000 of the transient merchant licenses money that we get, yep. Okay, I've got several things, actually. ELC, the door out here on the ELC, it was really a bear, people trying to shut the door all winter long, it's been doing that, leaving for the, for the years. It's a split door, it's an anti-catastrophe door, I guess, but this was built for CSE, it was built to be, not bomb-proof, but certainly disaster-proof, be able to lock it down, shut it down, seal it all, well, that's been a lot of years, anyway, that door needs to be replaced. So Don has given me two quotes, and I talked to council members about this the other night, and they, they understand too, they need to do that. Rather than replacing it with that, with that double, double sealed door, split door, and the same mechanism it has now, I thought we just need to replace it with a standard entry door, and, and we need to have some openers on it as well, because this is getting to be our meeting place for all of our meetings, and so since we're handicap and accessible, we're gonna have to have the automatic door opener as well. So Don got two, two bids here. This company called La Force has a bid to replace that door, that's to take the old door out, rebuild it, and then install the new door. Also to, includes two closers on courthouse, the north and south doors need closures on them, they don't have working, working things to close the doors. It's not the automatic ones, just regular mechanical door closures. So for those two new closures and the door out here, the bid was $5,453, so $5,453. And then talking to Stanley, Stanley is a company that makes the automatic door closures that we now have at the courthouse, and these are, be the push-button posts that we all see places to go into, and the cost for installing those is, sure is. The numbers had to be in there someplace. Well, that's funny. Here, just $2,600, that's for the automatic, handicap accessible doors. So any thoughts on those two things?
Okay, so basically, we only have one quote for the door here.
Yes.
And it includes two closures at the courthouse.
That includes two closures at the courthouse.
This one is for closures only at the courthouse.
No, this is for the closer only at here, automatically open and closes door with push-button handicap accessible door.
There's no closures of the $5,400 bid, is that what you're saying?
No automatic closures, just the mechanical closures, like doors have them, will close themselves if you let go of it, because those doors don't have one on them. They've had them, but they failed, they need to be replaced.
So, so we really have two quotes for two different things.
Two different things, yep.
And that was all he was, all he was able to get, that was one quote for...
One from La Force is for the door on this building, and two mechanical closures at the courthouse.
Yep.
The Stanley bid is for the automatic, the automation system where you hit the button and it opens the doors, for here, on the new door. Stanley does install doors, but they, they put the closures on them after that. So the $5,453 is for the door installation, and two mechanical closures at the courthouse. The Stanley bid is to put automatic openers and closures on this door after they install them.
Just out of curiosity, La Force say how much the door was here versus the things at the courthouse? Just so we can get a total, I was trying to just figure out what the total cost of this door.
Which I know the council already said it had to be done.
Yeah, I can't tell you.
Okay, I just thought maybe they broke it down to a door.
They listed it all, but they didn't break the, break the numbers out.
That's fine.
If that's the case, I'll make a motion, we make an agreement with La Force for $5,453 for the two mechanical closures at the courthouse, the new door installed here, and the agreement with Stanley for the $2,600 to make this door functional and handicap accessible.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay, I'll get these back from Don then. Okay, last meeting, when we had the discussion with payroll situation, we promised, made the statement that we would fix it now, so we stopped bleeding, so going forward, it will be right, and then we will figure out how to make the employees whole after we get it fixed. So I called Harris and spoke to Harris about training, and Caitlin is the payroll person now, and I think Laura had sent an email to him too. I talked to a lady named Anne up at, up at Harris, and so I told her that we were just looking to get this person trained too. So I've met with Caitlin a couple times, asking what, what her feelings were on the training, and of course, we can't tell Laura what she can and can't do in her office. We can't tell her she can't fire somebody, or she can't hire somebody, we, we obviously can't do that. But if Caitlin is her choice and has been to do payroll, and, and she knows she needs to get, to get trained, and the training has not occurred, so I talked to Harris, and the rate is $175 an hour, she thinks it would be two seven-hour days, and then on top of that, since it would be in-house training, which is what they recommend, it would be an overnight hotel, and Miley, she lives up north of Fort Wayne, and then the per diem for meals, so we're probably looking in the $3,000 range to, to have that training done. So I told Caitlin that in the past, with other training, specialized training for EMS, we, we paid that, but we got a promise from those people that they remain at least five years, otherwise they pay back for the training, because if they leave, they take that training with them, of course, and there was accreditation with them, highway department as well, we have paid for the CDLs for highway department people with a promise that they would work an amount of time, calling, they got the CDLs. But I didn't want to request that of Caitlin. Her situation is she is certainly willing to stay till the end of the year and into next year, as long as that's okay with Laura, I mean, again, that's Laura's employee. But, but she's willing to stay this year and going into next year, but she's gonna be graduating, getting her degree here next spring, and she's probably going to be looking to do her own business, but she said she would be willing to stay and train the new person coming into Laura's office after, after that point. So my recommendation is that we pay for the training from Harris, so that Laura's work the schedule out, on days, works for her to have her being trained for two days, and then I suppose those funds would come from the auditor's budget, I guess you have a training budget, I guess you have funds for that?
No, I'm trained budget, no, I did.
Okay, we'll figure out where that comes from, but the council also agrees that, that that training has got to be done, we've got to get this payroll thing under, under control. So we going forward, we have no more problems, and then we can figure out how to rectify the things that have been problems in the past. So what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, again, it does need to be addressed, and, and we don't know the computer system, that's where Harris needs to be the one who does the training and all the ins and outs of the system, and where you post things, where you don't post things, how you make changes, and so on and so forth. And I'm sure that even the payroll system talks to the accounts payable system when we get into, we got deductions for payroll, which automatically then should kick out a claim for what we paid to the insurance companies or whatever, which people have withheld, but how all that works, of course, we know nothing about that, Harris, it's their software and...
Is it called Harris Systems, or what's it called?
Harris Software.
Harris Software, okay.
But it doesn't pick out, it doesn't kick out the claims.
But somehow it talks to it.
No, you've got a manual going there and do it, everything's manual.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let, we'll let Harris talk about that, I don't know anything about systems, I don't know if that's right or not, but I just think it's important that Harris know the training. They know the system, they know the software, they know where you, what screens you go to to enter data and, and so on and so forth, and so we just need to get, again, as you said, as the employees know, moving... as the employees know moving forward, that they have confidence their paycheck is where it needs to be. Now, we should have the issues of the back, which we'll address later. But that being said, I make a motion that, uh, we go ahead and, uh, contract with Harris to come in and do the training, uh, for the payroll activities, uh, in the auditor's office at the rate that they quoted to us.
And I'll second that. And I really think it's overdue. I think it should be standard.
Okay, and, uh, so all, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Do you, uh, you wanna speak with them? You want me to speak with them? Do you have any special days or better than other days to ever train?
Um, I'd have to look at the payroll schedule and.
Caitlin thought it wouldn't matter to her what day it was, but I thought it might matter to you what day it was.
Well, it kinda matters on where you are in payroll system.
Yeah, that's what I thought we had to do.
Yeah. So, I could, I could call.
Two consecutive days.
Um, I, I could call Annie and set something up and get two-day training.
Okay, gotta work. All right.
Last time, um, when we did that on Angie, it was just a one-day training.
Yeah, she felt.
She knows the payroll part.
Yeah.
It's accounts payable is what she's having problems with.
Annie felt too was the way to go and I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with that. I don't wanna try to get it on the chief. I want it fixed. And we thought we probably said it would be fixed going forward. So, let's just do that.
It's fixed.
And then Caitlin's promise should be at least through the end of the year and then into next year until such things may change for her. But she promises to train the person coming in, so I think we'll be okay with that. All right, and I stopped and talked to Russell and Dur. We were talking about how to fix the problems that we have in the past. And as Bruce said, somebody's just gonna have to go back to two thousand nineteen, January one, to go through every pay of every employee all the way through. See what has been deducted, what has been and has not been paid toward the insurance plans, retirement plans, all that stuff. And, uh, as we talked about, uh, in meeting of the day, that can be very expensive to get that done. Um, Harris does not do that kind of a thing. Russell and Dur don't have time to do that kind of a thing. But the lady from Harris, Bruce, you thought there'd be a conflict. She didn't think there'd be a conflict. Do you think there'd be a conflict if, if Bruce was involved with going back? Now, you know if you're in it or not, but if you're, given your company, she mentioned your company by name. She thought that you, you and your partner could probably do that. Would there be a conflict in them going back and just reusing what was paid before and come up with a recommendation of how to settle it?
So, where you get into that is him being elected official and him already receiving pay.
Okay.
Um, before we did that, I, I would like to have a chance to do a little research on that. Initially off the cuff, it would cause me pause, I guess, is what I would say.
Well, we don't, and we don't wanna do that. We don't look like we're doing anything, uh, 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 towards. So, we wanna make sure it's all, all transparent, all wide open.
Yeah.
I can't imagine sitting going through every employee, every paycheck for the last three and a half years or, or three years.
Sounds fun.
But that's what, that's what accountants do.
That's what we talk to do.
That's why they're so weird.
Right. I'd just feel better if I got a little chance to research it before.
Okay, and research, you probably know who else does that kind of a thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, Baker Tilly's another big one out there. They're a C P A firm.
Okay.
Uh, they do a lot of, of work for counties and there are other locals. I mentioned the other night at the meeting that you could have like a sack rider out of Terre Haute or, uh, maybe somebody out of Crawfordsville that would have the time to do it. But they don't specialize in that stuff, so, uh.
They didn't mention, uh, we had an executive session to discuss this stuff. No decisions, of course, made at that, but just discussed the issue and, and how, how this was all was working and what needed to be done, what wasn't being done. And that's why we're bringing these things up now for a vote today. But they did mention the attorney, is also an attorney for another county who had a similar problem. And they had to have the same services done and that was upwards of a hundred thousand bucks to get that, get that done.
And that was Baker Tilly, which was, you know, get a, a large, large C P A firm.
Okay, well, let's look into it then, see who's available, what we can do with that.
Uh, but I think, um, well, it's services, so we don't have to bid and it's not a contract situation. But, uh, we probably have to put some kind of R F P together, uh, and then let's see who bids on it.
Why do you stop about, on contracts that size, if it was a construction project for something or a purchase project for that service, we'd have to get some bids to do that. But since it's service, you're hiring someone to perform a service, you don't have to do that bid process to do that. You can work with whomever you think is, probably didn't work.
Yeah, I haven't been around, I mean, again, I don't keep up with the laws like I used to. And so, Nick needs to research, cause I don't know the conflict of interest laws now. I would also probably contact the ethics, uh, person, uh, in Indianapolis because, uh, they make the rulings. I don't know whether that's an ethic, uh.
That's exactly what we'll.
Transaction. So, we got, we got ethics, we've got the conflict of interest and, uh, uh, and then, as I mentioned, I would probably, uh, should my company decide that they would wanna to offer a quote or, or put a quote in, I would have to probably abstain from all.
Yeah.
Activities involved with it as far as the vote and that type of thing.
Okay.
It is something that needs to be done.
I remind you all, April twelfth, we have a meeting with, uh, the, um, um, council and us just to receive information from, uh, core facilities, Matt Stackley. That's gonna be here April twelfth at ten thirty. We have a ten-dollar donation given by Ron Turner. It's been a long, long term, a long time friend of Park County. And he, uh, sent a donation to help with the ambulance building that he may be in trouble we've had there. We deeply appreciate that and thinking of us. Um, we have a contract to, uh, go it on with Hendrix County. We talked about, uh, uh, when we went with, uh, Ari Sutton and his associates. They do amazing stuff. And this contract is actually outside of our regular insurance. So, it's not part of our insurance package. It's an agreement with Hendrix County Hospital. We intend to do this with pharmaceuticals. I intend to do this with cardiac care. Right now, it's with, uh, uh, O C L care, uh, bones, uh, like hip replacements, knee replacements, broken bones. And Hendrix County is getting to be, if not, the number one in the state for these, this types of, uh, osteopathic work. They have surpassed, um, Ortho windy in, in recognition, acknowledgement of, of position. And whether that's fair, I don't know, but I just know when they're in the monitoring, they have surpassed. So, they are really number one. So, their prices are so low compared to the other hospitals around that they don't even work inside our insurance. The savings by going to Hendrix exceeds what we would, would, um, I'm sorry. The savings exceeds what we would pay if we paid ourselves to go anyplace else. In fact, it's such a savings by working through this specialization with Hendrix County that instead of our employees having to pay a deductible and then us paying the bill, we would go ahead and pay the bill as we would always pay anyway, cause we're self-insured. But the employee would actually, in this case, for, I think it was for a hip replacement, the employee would get a fifteen hundred dollar stipend. They would get paid to go to Hendrix County to have this done instead of go to some other hospital to have it done. So, the savings to the, to the county is significant enough that we can encourage them to do that and give a stipend then to the employee to go there instead. We aren't the first on this. They have multiple counties, uh, that, and cities that participate in this Hendrix County. And so, that's the, the contract and proposal sent to me from Ari Sutton. And, uh, our attorney has looked at the, uh, contract and he's okay with the contracts, pretty, pretty, uh, template. And, uh, we aren't, like I said, we're not the first to go into this. So, there really is no downside to doing this. Employees don't have to go. They still go to whatever hospital they wanna go. They still do whatever they do. Insurance will just work as it always has. But in this case, for, for bones, if you choose to go to Hendrix to have it done, then, uh, not only will you not have to have that deductible and out-of-pocket cost, you'll actually get paid to go there because the savings is so great to the insured, to the county insurer, that is worth doing it that way. So, I would highly recommend we do that. In fact, I would make the motion that we, uh, we, um, adopt that contract with Hendrix County and, uh, and, uh, join this orthopedic entity that they've created.
And I'll second that.
There is no, there's no additional fee on the insurance.
No, nothing. It's entire, it's amazing, it's amazing plan. When, when Richard first started talking to me about this, it's like, like he, no, we've got these, we've got, we've got paid. Well, you still paid for the surgery, but the cost, but the cost pressure is so low that we can share the savings with, with, basically what it is, it's the cost savings that, that we're sharing with the, uh, with the employee to have them go there and save that money. So, all right, um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. I'm gonna copy and get that, get that signed, man. Not quite done, but I'm getting there. I, Laura, two questions I could not answer. I know you've told me before, but I couldn't remember what it was. Question was, um, with H S A payments and the H R A payments. I know H S A, we pay February and July. Is that correct?
February and August.
February and August. And I know we, we, we split in half. And how, how much is the annual payment for singles and family?
Well, each time would be thirteen, for an annual payment, a single's thirteen hundred.
Okay, thirteen, and family is?
A family is twenty-six hundred.
Okay. How is the H R A then? Is it the same?
H R A is a little bit different. I don't control that. The, um, E B C company controls that.
Okay.
So, what they do is that they've got amounts set up for them through the insurance plan. And then.
Is it the same dollar amounts for H R A as it is for H S A?
I kinda think so, but I don't know for positive.
It's been too long. I just didn't remember.
Check in, into the exact dollar amount because I never see that. We don't see that exact dollar amount for each person.
Okay.
What happens is that if you're over sixty-five, um, say you went to the hospital and you had surgery and now you've got a bunch of bills, that you send that amount, that invoice into the E B C and then they will pay it.
Okay.
And then if you go get prescriptions or whatever you've got.
Up to a limit or whatever.
They'll pay it. So, they put so much in your account all the time.
Okay.
But once after you leave the county, your money's gone.
Right.
You do not have any access to it.
Just so you know.
Versus H S A, you, your money rolls with your old dollars.
H S A is a health savings account. What, way that came to be several years ago, the premium just got crazy. And the, the, uh, we were actually on the verge of, we weren't sure we could afford that insurance for employees anymore. So, I, um, I met with them and I talked with them. And by increasing the deductible by thirteen hundred, about thirteen hundred dollars, say a thousand dollars, we increased the deductible a thousand dollars. We were gonna say more than that thousand dollars in premium cost, which doesn't seem to make mathematical sense to me, but that's the way it was. But I didn't wanna put that cost onto the employees. So, we could increase the deductible by a thousand dollars, give the employee the thousand dollars to pay that increased deductible and still be money head on the premium cost to the county. That was also a benefit to the employee, cause that thousand dollars, thirteen hundred now and twenty-six hundred for family, once that is given to you as an H S A health savings account, that is your money to be used on eligible expenses. This has gotta be a medical expense, eligible expense. But that is your money to keep. And if you don't use that money, that stays in your account. It rolls over to the next year. And as Laura just said, if you quit your job and you wanna go someplace else, that money goes with you. And H R A, that's a health reimbursement account. The other side of that is a, an account where you put money in this fund and it pays your bills. Um, and you, um, and the reason we have to have the H R A, H R As used to be, but I know they've changed it. But it used to be, if you didn't use that, all that money in your account, by the end of the year, you lost it. The company got to keep that. I know that's been changed, not that way anymore. But we had to offer an H R A to our older employees because it's not, you're not allowed. Federal won't allow you to be on Medicare and have a health savings account both. They will allow you to have Medicare and H R A. So, that's why, that's why we have both. So, those who are on Medicare and older, uh, have the H R As. And all the other employees who are under Medicare, not under Medicare, but underage, uh, have the H S As. H S A is much better than the H R A, but still, if we didn't have that H R A to offer to our older employees, the H S A recipients would be getting the thirteen hundred or twenty-six hundred dollar benefit and the other employees would not be getting that. So, that balanced that out for all of them. So, that's what that, that was about.
So, it comes up to the E, to the H R A. The county doesn't control that. The E B C company does.
Right.
And then they send us a bill every time.
Yeah.
And then we pay that bill for that.
Okay. All right, and, I think it's, I already mentioned the core meeting and the Lisa nurse, so that's all I got. You guys got any, any new bills?
Talk about that camera.
Oh, yes, um, um, John gave us, I don't have that quote with me. It was a four hundred and ninety-one dollars?
Four sixty-nine.
Four sixty-nine.
Of course, that was a week ago.
Okay, yeah, that's true. Um, in order to be able to live stream, and if we ever want to, two things on this. If we ever wanna have, to allow Zoom meetings, allow any of us or council members to, to, uh, uh, cause the rules have changed now that the governor has lifted the emergency declaration. Uh, the ability to have meetings by Zoom or virtual meetings, uh, has changed. Now, the new requirements are that you have to have a majority of, you have to have a quorum in, in person. But the other person who is, uh, wants to be at the meetings, uh, and attend, uh, the only way you can do that is if you offer live streaming. And, uh, and that live streaming is, uh, something we do not have. I think John can do it sometimes, but it has to depend on internet and what he has. He needs a better camera to do that. Right now, he's using a county, um, laptop to do what he does. Uh, but he has no camera to do that with and no funds to do that with. And, um, to me, this is so significant that all of our, everybody in the county now has access to our meetings. Everybody's meetings, they can see them either on their own time or it'll be live stream, whatever. So, I think it's worth having that camera. So, for four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, John would be able to live stream all of our meetings. We won't get into where we're gonna allow comments or questions, those kind of things, because those, those would never go peacefully, I don't believe. So, uh, and I learned that lesson from watching the governors, uh, governors in news conferences when he's online and just the comments that are made by just some crazy, crazy people out there. So, we won't go that way, but we will offer it live. And, uh, then they all have our addresses. They can all send questions to us. They can all do that kind of stuff. So, so my suggestion is to think about and see if you've got discussion on this, that we go ahead and buy the four hundred and sixty-nine dollar camera. Now, a couple of council members didn't want him to be able to take that to other meetings, like the town council meetings, which are important to me too, that people have access to town council. Uh, they kinda wanted that installed here, so it'd be a permanent thing. So, all the meetings here, he could live stream, but he wouldn't have access, uh, to take the camera to other places. The ownership of the camera would always have to stay with us. Nick and I mentioned that at the meeting. And then, uh, we, we, not a position where we can buy something and give it to John just to have. We can't be giving away stuff. But we can buy the camera for us and allow John to use it to do the live stream. So, I guess the first is, do we want to buy the camera? And then the second, we, we, we want him to allow, allow him to take it out of the building, go to other, other meetings and, and broadcast those as well. So, any questions on whether we should buy the camera or not?
I have no questions. I mean, we know we have to have it here. It's come down to commissioners.
Yep.
I have no problem buying, purchasing a camera. I think we need to.
I don't have any issues. I think that's the wave of the future.
It is.
It's just.
And Laura did find a fund for, for us, for our, our budget to pay it out of.
People could get online and still watch instead of trying to come to a public meeting, which sometimes is difficult to do, uh, depending on the time. So, I though am concerned about the fact that it is a county asset. And being a county asset, I, um, I'm not sure that, uh, legally that that would allow John to be able to move it around. But unless you think, unless we make him some kind of.
But so then you're getting into liability concerns. I think it's broken or stolen or different things like that. Um, I mean, you can contract for those things, but, you know, contracts are only so good.
So, it'd be simple just to buy it and leave it here, have it, have it. Is that something you would install someplace in here if it was gonna stay here?
No.
You still do it like you do now?
Yeah. It's just a, it's just a camera that can be, these cameras, you can't use them to live stream.
And, and the idea was it's not that big a expense. And if the town of Rockville wanted to buy one, or if the other towns wanted to buy it for live stream theirs, they could do that as well.
Laura, I mean, if we did a, did a local agreement, the town of Rockville.
I was also wanting to ask permission to be, when this gets in the way you're bringing up, uh, to have the option to take that county laptop home with me. Um, right now, I'm having to produce these videos eight to four, uh, Monday through Friday.
Correct.
During business hours here in the annex.
Well, let's do the camera thing first. So, is there a motion to purchase the camera?
Yeah, I make a motion. We purchase camera.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now how to deal with, do we wanna stay here? You wanna get it interlocal?
We do it interlocal, like if Rockville paid two hundred dollars and we pay two hundred dollars for this rough. Then, I think he would have the ability probably to have more freedom to move that equipment here and there and various places.
So, still the concern I would have is liability if it gets broken when it's being transported. Or say it's in his car and somebody breaks in his car and steals the camera.
Can I just sign a liability agreement?
You could, yeah. We could do that.
I have no problem with that.
But you would replace it on your own and then everything?
Would it be best if we let him contact town of Rockville? And if they want some skin in the game, instead of buying the whole camera, we could actually do that. You could come up with an agreement for John. I have no problem with that.
I can certainly put that together and I, I think John would probably be at their meeting later tonight, is my guess.
So, it's four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Tell them if that's only four hundred bucks we'll spend.
Yeah, they're even.
I'll throw it and go buy the camera.
You do this, you do this.
It's, it's.
But what we could do is contractually indicate, you know, if it's lost or stolen or broken in John's possession, he has some liability as to that. Um, if John's okay with that, and we certainly can sit down and go over the contract. But if it's being purchased by both entities, then both entities are gonna have to sign the contract as to that too.
But the other question is, he has a county laptop that he uses to produce all these things, but he has to use it here. He can't take it with him. Uh, can we do the same type of thing with that liability agreement on the, on the computer? That he could take it other places to do his production? And if it breaks it or loses it, it's his, it's on him, he's gotta replace it?
I can produce a contract.
So, would you be okay with that?
So be- before we actually make a decision on that, we'll give you some time to come up with the contract and.
And you talk to Rockville and see what they want to split it with us, how they wanna do that?
You, you like the school board meetings or anything?
No, they, when, they started stre- uh, streaming their, at least recording their own, archiving them, uh, the month I was going to start doing it, so. They jumped ahead of me.
So basically just Rockville in here or do you go to other town boards too?
I go to all the town council meetings.
Like back, uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Marshawn, Buddale.
I think it's great service.
About Southwest Park schools.
No, they, they're doing their own.
They're doing their own.
Okay. I have no problem doing it, but I want something legally and someone else to have some skin in the game. I mean, it's.
I think we include that computer, you send out an agreement then too, not just the camera, but the computer as well.
I can do that, yeah.
You can cover him under the liability. That way he doesn't have to be here eight to four.
Yeah. I, I would want the information as to the camera and computer once it's purchased though. That way I can be as specific as possible in there.
So you've got our permission to go ahead and, and buy it. You bring the invoice to us, so we'll prove the invoice on claims and we'll get the money back to you for that. That work? Cause there's no way we can really just give you a check and you go do that, but we wouldn't know what the serial number was on or anything till you get involved.
And I, I want the agreement signed before that you reimburse the money.
Reimbursed, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Alright.
Does something have like, you know, saphenin or something?
Yeah, I'm typing it right now.
Alrighty. That sounds good. And John, I do, I do appreciate the, the worst thing that happens with all public meetings and public officials and meetings. Yes, rumors get going where somebody says, well, I heard they say this, or I heard they did that. This, this sort of nipped that right, I need to buy it. People have access to us and that's all we want. We don't wanna, we don't wanna, and, and there may be something that we see or we do. And somebody who's watching it says, well, you should have done this, you wouldn't have thought of that unless somebody contacts us before. I've had multiple people say to me, well, I saw on your meeting that, this came up a water discussion, and they never would have had access to that. They wouldn't have come to this meeting. They can't come to meetings typically, they're working. And, uh, so I've had that happen several times. So it's a, it's a good service to do. I, I appreciate you.
And with that, going to the Rockville.
Okay.
Do yours give me some?
Alright, that's all the new stuff I got. You, you guys got anything new? New business-wise? Okay. We have a, old business, we have an outstanding appointment for the health board. Okay. And so Travis McPike is a, a part county guy. He is a. Um, a nurse practitioner and, um, he has been recommended to be appointed to the vacant seat on the, uh. On the health department. So I would make the motion that we appoint Travis McPike to serve on the health board.
I would just wanna hesitate for just a second and again, I didn't do Travis. But we've been given information here by the health board. That Indiana law requires that no more than four of the members be in the same political party.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we've already got four Republicans. So Travis, whoever we appoint, has to either be a Democrat or has to be independent.
Unless no Democrats or independents are available or willing.
Okay, exactly. See, she had put that in her paragraph.
So her citation doesn't say that, but what the general Indiana position on that is if there's no independents and no Democrats that are willing, then you can use.
So we can go ahead and appoint him and if he's challenged, then we'd have substantiate what, what part of your body was?
Well, but what if the rest of these that are.
Right.
Have put their name in, one of them is a Democrat.
They make the recommendations. You guys have final say as far as the health board. But if none of the Democrats that are recommended are willing or able or independents are.
Problem, the problem she put in here, she says.
She didn't give us enough information.
Political affiliations. So here we got six people who she's put names in for, but we have no idea what their political affiliation is.
They need to tell us what they are.
We have to know that before we can do anything. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay.
So nothing against Travis, don't get me wrong, but.
Well, then we don't know that those affiliations on the other ones are still accurate affiliations.
It's totally determined by how they voted in the previous primaries.
Right. People change parties. So we need to know what the current composition consists of to make that determination.
Can you go ahead and appoint and then if it's challenged, then he would not be a?
Or that wouldn't be my position, Jim.
Okay, okay.
I would not.
Which has been open for a long time.
Right, if there's not a Democrat or, or a independent available.
Well, then you, you go find them then that they need to, uh, to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know this Janet.
See, I really thought.
Dan Cooper?
Yeah.
Um, she's married to Roger Cooper down there on Burston Road.
She work, who, she work for the health department?
She is now. She took, she took over at the first of the year as a part-time clerk.
Yeah, she was a.
She replaced him.
Girl, Janet Kilby worked in there.
She's originally from Annapolis and graduated from Turquoise School.
That's alright. I just didn't who she was, but she's the one that presented us this list, there's six of them.
Yeah.
With adding Travis on here. We don't know any of the political affiliations.
Can you check to see if that even is standard, is still in effect? Cause I know some committees, they dissolve that requirement that you have. No more than a simple majority, one party or the other.
I did pull the Indiana code after I saw that in the letter. It's still the current Indiana code. But like I said, if there's not a Democrat or a, uh, independent that's willing to serve. Or that meets the approval of the health department and the commissioners, then it's a different situation.
So do we require them to go?
I would. They're the ones that have to make the recommendations to go to fill the vacancy.
Janet, go back to Janet. So you've got to go get political affiliation.
I don't know if they talked to any of those people before recommending them or not, but.
Okay, and, and.
Cause they might not be willing to serve.
And like, uh.
Cause there's one on there I feel is probably unlikely to be willing to serve based on knowledge I have, but.
And likely just, I mean, even if they were all approved, and they were, uh, the, the correct party to be eligible, even doesn't mean we have to, have to take any of them.
Right, you have final say.
Yeah. Okay.
So they have to meet muster with you guys before taking.
So I'm worried, I, I'm just, I wonder how the independent part works. So I guess I, you didn't vote in the previous primary. So if you didn't vote in the previous primary, then you'd be an independent.
So you're not, it's, it's a registration thing. Like I'm a re- registered Republican. I don't mind saying that, but some of.
But I don't think it is a registration thing. Can't you show up on the, on the primary day and choose which ballot you wanna go with?
Right, but when they default to it, like say you're running for office, it's the past vote.
Okay. Not, not the past primary, the last time you voted in primary?
Right.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I knew there were, we had an issue where we had a young man who was running for sheriff years ago. And he had voted in, in a, I think a Democratic primary. Because he wanted that, the president to be chosen, to be the candidate. And then he wanted to run for office on the Republican side and he couldn't do that without the approval of the president of the, of the Republican Party.
Right, yeah.
And he wouldn't give that permission to do that. So he couldn't run on that. What a, what a dumb thing. Okay. Alright, so we need to return this letter to Janet then to tell her that they need to confirm what party affiliation they are?
Right.
Okay.
Cause that's, that is what the current Indiana code says under that citation that she had attached there.
You don't know what Travis is, do you? And why do you vote for the last, uh, primary?
I would venture say probably Republican.
Okay, okay. Well, we need to confirm this too.
Well, and if you're tableing it, that'd give me a chance to look at, to see if there's any ending or any further development. But the standing Indiana code on it does say what they say it says.
Alright.
But I, I didn't know that was coming.
I knew they changed several things with the health department. I didn't know that was one of them. The convention business commission, they changed that. That's no more requirement on convention business commission.
But I only saw this today when I got here. So I, I, the, the furthest of my extent of my research on is just looking at that citation. So there could be something else that gives us guidance. I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
Well, I'll, I'll get this back to her and then, um.
But the part about the unwilling or unable as far as the independent or the Democrat, I know that exists, but it's just whether.
Right.
Anything else exists.
Right, okay. Well, then I should get that spot filled with somebody and he was willing, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um. Then I'll get that back to her and tell her we need to know what those people were. And that is public, public information, right? You can go to the clerk's office and ask.
She's actually getting them.
She's actually.
She's getting them that.
Oh, good. Do those, do those again, would you please?
First three.
First three Republican.
I mean, if they're all Republican, then your position is who do you want to serve?
That it becomes.
Yeah.
Paul Price, Republican.
Okay.
What happens is in smaller counties.
Oh, yeah, it's all in one way and it's hard to get someone to.
Correct.
I would guess. Deborah Nelson. Roswell. She's a weak Democrat, is what it says. I'm using the G O P thing.
Okay. So it's a weak Democrat?
Yeah.
That's funny. Must be on the fence then.
Yeah. But sometimes they're hard, weak, or smooth.
Yeah. So she'd be the only Democrat then. Doesn't mean we have to use her, but that'd be the only one that's, uh, I just don't know her at all.
I don't either. So she's a retired R M.
Well, let's hold off on that appointment still then.
Give Nick a chance to look at it and see. Chance to research.
Alright, so we have, oh, we don't need to give that back to Janet then. We just don't have to respond to it because we don't have an answer yet. Okay. Man, been a long meeting. Justin, you're, I hope you're gonna be quick.
I was gonna say I've got it runs, but, uh. My biggest thing, uh, I've got a grant request. Uh, it's, be going through the L C C. It's just, uh. We don't have to do any kind of share or anything. It's five grand for National Night Out.
Okay.
Say you'll make last year to the partnership with us and we're gonna do it during the third of this year one night.
Okay, I make the motion that we authorize, uh, Justin to seek the grant with the L C C for the, um, night out.
And I'll second that.
All fair, say aye. Okay.
And the jail fencing project, which was a grant, they set the post. They did that about two weeks ago.
Okay.
We're just kinda waiting, probably he'll drive out a little bit to do the rest of it. Um, the two new Tahoe's are outfitters and Lafayette. It's kinda first come, first served. I don't know when that'll be done. I don't do it by appointment. Uh, our parking lot repaired and paving should be happening soon sometime.
Great.
We're paying it out of Colosser. It's, I don't remember, maybe it's a company out there.
Okay.
They've used them.
It's not Washawal Bash Haswell?
It's not that. I can't, it's, it's Williams. I don't remember. It's Williams.
Okay.
But the, the previous sheriff abused them, I've used them once, so.
If you're available, you, you might wanna come to that meeting when we're gonna talk about the thing.
Yeah, I marked it down on here.
Okay, September twelve, I'm September.
The ten thirties, I at least had.
Yes, here, yeah. He will have, uh, drawings from engineering companies on, uh, at least two, and I think maybe three different materials. So you can see how it would look when it gets done. So those renderings by the engineers and the council, we can pay for those. So he'll be bringing those. You can be able to see what he liked, liked there too.
So has he already been out there and?
Yes, yeah.
What does that have behind it?
He said it was.
It's, yeah, like a screen with, it's stuck over, it's got the screen. I don't know much about it, but it's got.
It's got the batten that that screen is fastened to, you know, and it, it's, it's a stucco screen, you know, it's like.
But it does have something we can fasten another material for it, or does it have to be removed or did you?
We talked to one guy. One guy said you can just kinda patch it and then somebody else said that you need to clean a lot out, put a new screen and a new batten on it. So I don't. I don't know. Those new jails are putting metal on, so.
I guess we'll find out on the twelfth.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Stucco's cheaper. I don't, it's lasted twenty-four years.
What do you call that kind of metal?
Expanded.
Expanded, yeah. Um, that's why all stucco is, it's just punch, punch metal and it's got, it's got points to it that are adhered to it. I don't know why we couldn't patch it either, I don't know. As long as it's fastened to the batten, okay. And I don't know why you would have to replace the still intact material. Knowing you're gonna have more problem going on down the road if you just keep patching it, so.
As long as there's no whole sections coming off, I mean, big sections, it looks to me like.
Yeah, it's mainly just kinda like peeling is what it's in parts, so.
Okay. Well, he'll have, he'll have some recommendation anyway, so.
Then, uh, so far your date fifty thousand, two fourteen for D O C. And we submitted fourteen thousand, one seventy-five fifty for, uh, D O C and out of county housing for March, so.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Anything new from us?
Nope.
Okay. See you on the twelfth.
Thank you, Justin.
That was.
Thanks.
Randy back there? Randy?
Yeah.
He always hides. Like he doesn't wanna get called in or something. I don't know. He's, he's just shy.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All that wisdom flowing out, it's kinda tough, yeah.
How you guys doing today?
Good, how are you? Before you start, I got a couple of roads on it. And I know they're all on your list, but I have a couple. Um, Hilltop's pretty beaten up. I gotta call out that. I drove it. It's pretty beaten up, so be on that. And then Martin, I drove, I drove Martin, I drove after talking to Dan about that. And there are, I think, eight. I can tell you, like eight spots that are bad, it's broken up. Really, I was gonna have to have bad news for, for Dan on that because compared to some roads, it's not, it's not too bad. But there are nine spots that, that are, that are bad, about three miles into it or not. So I don't know if you have a chance to look at that too and see what we can do to those. I don't infer, Dale, you just put some material on in the holes that were there temporarily, we had to place, fix that later, but if you could look at that, that'd be, that'd be good. I went out there on Sunday, I guess it was, and drove it. I marked down where all the spots were, so not that you need that, but, but if you do want that, I can share those spots with you.
I'm fine with it. I'm pretty sure. Yeah, we'll get to it soon as we can. We're passing one thousand today. Then that should go with our next road.
Okay, great.
For the pen.
Why are you holding down back there?
I thought what he said was funny.
Okay.
I'll have a whole lot. I've got a preliminary engineering report for Bridge thirty-two.
Which one's that?
That's the air bridge.
Oh, yeah, the concrete.
Try to, uh, need, the deck needs to be redone and put an adhesion on it for the pedestrians.
Gotcha.
Uh, that's about a five thousand dollars. Uh, repairs of scope of work. For the design of the project and cost estimate. So we can use in federal funding.
Okay.
So I just got this last week and I didn't get a chance to get it to Nick for him to look over it. If you want him to look over it, then we could sign it next week.
A P U?
Looks pretty.
Very standard?
Pretty standard.
You just have the approval for Jim to sign unless there's some type of legal objection to it.
Okay. So we just need a motion for me to authorize me to sign that upon, um, the approval of, of Nick?
Yeah.
That's your motion?
Yeah, like a motion that we allow Jim to sign it after Nick looks it over.
Okay.
That way I won't have to wait for the last meeting.
All fair, say aye. Okay.
Then, uh. Twenty-nine Martin Davis.
Yes.
The trails.
Rosedale Bridge, yeah.
Yeah.
So you know he's talking about that little, little bridge at the bottom of the hill going into Rosedale, needs to be replaced. Yeah, by shotmires, or yeah. And so the Trail Association, part of their grant is to the same thing you're talking about, bridge and replace the bridge, make a walkway. Uh, apart, so you can go on it too without being on, on the road. Yep. Have you got a number for you? Everyone in the council?
Yeah, uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
Um, he said they have around eighty or ninety thousand dollars put toward it.
Okay.
And leave us with a hundred, about a hundred and forty.
So were we, we were gonna pay any way to replace that bridge?
Uh. No, I think we was gonna do about a hundred. I mean, that price one, that's been quite a while ago too.
Well, I know they have funds. I would make sure that you don't pay any more than what you would have paid to replace our part of it. If they want the extra, there's gotta come out of that grant to me. I can't.
That may be the hundred and forty now.
Yeah, I, I just can't put any of that cost off before the trails off on the taxpayer. That's been our promise all along. It's not gonna cost taxpayers anything on these, on the trail, so. As much as I like the trails, we're gonna make sure that we're not putting any money in the pot, so. If you would find out what it would have cost otherwise and let Martin know that you'll pay that amount, then he can, he can pay the rest of it. And if they don't wanna do that, then that's okay, but we just.
What type of bridge are they? Like a ring bridge?
You're looking at concrete.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Wider than what's there now?
Yeah, it's gonna be wider.
Cap, just the, the traffic part's gonna be wider too, not just the, um, the pedestrian part of it?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Cause there's one lane now, right?
Yes.
Seems so small, I can't really read it.
Happens when you get older.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, put my hand down before I say that.
Yeah, it looks like the bridge is thirty-six feet, ten inches out down.
Okay. That's your path, traveling, travel path, no?
Well, that's the total bridge.
That's the total.
It's only twenty-four, probably more likely for our part.
Okay.
And then, that's gonna be the.
Twenty-four wide enough for two vehicles?
Minimum's twenty-two, I think, at the stadium, I think.
I think twenty-four, I think they up to twenty-four.
Is it twenty-four now?
Okay. Well, that's good then, yeah, I, I think if you guys agree with that, that we shouldn't pay more than what you were gonna pay anyway to replace the bridge and then.
No, our, whatever our twenty-four foot width costs, then if they want a bicycle trail to go over on the same bridge, they're not gonna have to pay any difference, it's.
That's what the majority of our bridges are.
We just gotta be really protective of that, yeah, we did the same thing with the Bridgeton Bridge that you guys came into.
I'll have to move the council on that, their next meeting.
Okay.
He's supposed to come, too, Bart is.
Okay, you might give him a heads up that, that might cost him more than what he's looking at, because we're only gonna pay what it was, what it was gonna cost for you to do that. Okay.
And it's calculated, what, thirty-two? Width?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, ten, I think it was.
Okay, so twelve, twelve, ten, wide for the bicycle lane, ought to be pretty easy to figure.
Okay.
What their cost should be and what ours should be.
Hey, what else you got?
That's it.
Wow.
Patching every day that we can, the days we're not patching, trying to haul some stone.
I had two calls on that.
Any Duraburn now.
Can.
Nope.
Okay.
There are any, any fifty-three between.
Very good.
Sorry.
And we'll try eight, nobody had eight.
Wow.
It's ridiculous.
I had two requests for East Hybridge, but I know you already got East Hybridge done, but that's a perfect example of people who don't really understand how much better Duraburn is than gravel and gravel and that, and the. Sorry.
Now, we put some fifty-threes down.
She's gonna get.
Not very good at all. Just quit buying them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it may be a while before we get some of the roads covered.
Do you drive all the part that is Duraburn, you get off that onto the, to the gravel parts, it's just day and night between the two?
Fifty-threes even.
Yeah, it's day and night. Okay.
Are they, do we have any kind of contract with them or any kind of agreement at all?
We tried, but they, they couldn't promise, they made a reduction. There's a lot of counties doing what we're doing now, they've gone that way, and they realize.
Price still holds its own, or?
No, it's a, it's a, yeah.
Okay.
I forget exactly what it is, it's up almost a dollar, I think, it's more.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Thanks.
I hope.
So you ladies in the back, you have anything, an issue, ma'am?
What do you want, ma'am? No, I just wanted to let everyone know that tax statements will be going out April thirteenth, so start saving your dollars.
Somebody posted for Millie County that their property tax has about doubled for what they did previous year, are we in that same boat, have you seen those? Nope, good. Putting them in, putting them in for Millie County, thanks, what, Timmy Open was caring about?
We will next year, according to Katie, it will be pretty.
Yeah. They just choose to, who are we gonna get this year, farmers one year, residential shows next year, or businesses a year for that, just. Hate them. Did you have something for us?
No.
Alrighty. Nope, you good? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.